I hated to do that because we were having such good conversations, but I need to start this meeting, so I'll call the Onslow County Board of Education to order, and I'm sure that Commissioner Wright might call his board to order as well.
I'd like to, I don't have a, I don't have a gallows.
Please, please. You needed Roy sitting beside you.
That's not big enough. But I'd like to call the Public County Board of Commissioners to order for this meeting. Thank you for having us.
Oh, thank you. You know, we really appreciate sitting down and having a conversation, and we could've spread this room out, and I told Joe when we were getting ready to set it up, I said, "I want to be able to look people in the eye, and I want to be able to smell Bob's cologne, or whoever's sitting beside me." I said, "Because this is a conversation. It is not meant to be one person in charge of the meeting, and the other listening is supposed to be a conversation." And you know that we met on Monday as just a matter of protocol for us to make sure that we had our latest data. We wanted to make sure we had all of the latest data, not as it was just for the growth of the school system, but how our newest legislation was affecting us, and there was a recent change in that on Thursday and Friday of last week. So we needed to pull those pieces together so that we could wrap our heads around it to come back and give you the latest data that we have. We understand that Onslow County Schools is growing, the county's growing. I mean, you feel it in your service area greatly, and I guess that's a great challenge to have because it tells me two things. One, that people think that we have a great county to come to live, to raise children in, and from the school system side, it gives us an opportunity to look at ourselves and say, "Hey, we are a quality school system, and we are doing something that's good." The challenge of it is, on the other side, is what do we do to look at those challenges and address them? And I think we'll talk about that today on both sides of the fence here. The other thing, too, sitting on the Joe Ed Board with, I think Royce is on there as well, is that we look at the economic indicators for our county. So people are coming here because there are jobs. Our lowest, I think their unemployment rate is the lowest to spend in quite some time. So people are getting jobs. There are other jobs that are available, and those people that, if they really want to work, can find a job to earn some income to help their families. So on my side personally, I think that Onslow County is a great county to live in, and I hope that we will continue to embrace the growth that we have, even with the challenges that it may present. Jack, would you like to have some opening comments before we begin?
No, we are here to be able to learn and communicate and see what the school board is faced with, with the new law with K-33, for example, and we want to, since we are the biggest part of the funding mechanism for the schools, we want to find out, you know, what's, what you're facing and what we need to do to try and help you to accomplish the goals to educate our kids. And I understand about the growth. We had growth last year, we had growth this year. That's with the funding formula that we got together, that's quite a big number money-wise that we're looking at, too, so we always have to be able to look at what you need and then try to, try to do the best we can to find the money to pay for it. Of course, we, you know, we're obligated and mandated by the state to do that.
And we appreciate the opportunity to talk about that today. Any of the other boards, board members from either side, like to make a comment before we start our presentation today? First of all, we're going to have a review of the K size, the K-3 class size, and Dr. Collins and Mr. Myers are going to be directing that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I look a little drowsy this morning, it's because I am. I stayed up a little late last night watching that ballgame, and the Dodgers pulled one off, and we're going to be in game seven tomorrow, so. Again, Steve and I are going to tag team on this one. I'm Barry Collins, I work on the HR side and staffing part of it, and Steve works on the facility part side of it. And what we're looking at, I know you've heard about the K-3 class size restrictions, you probably have heard it referred to as HB-13. I'm going to condense all of that down to this one sheet of paper right here, because we just don't want to bore you with all the legal stuff.
Excuse me, this is in your packet.
Okay. So this is what we're faced with. If you look over in the left-hand column, this is the LEA max that we can go up to, and then you have the individual class size max, and this only affects, is in effect for kindergarten through third grade. So looking at 412, we get, we receive an allotment for those students, but there is no class size max. You can have as many as you want. Now, you've got to understand, we are going to use common sense about that and try to keep those numbers workable as well, but here's where the restrictions are. So we're in 17, 18, so what we've done so far this year, we've been able to manage it, is to keep our kindergarten through third grade LEA max at 20, so. And you also see over the class size, max is 23. So if you look at any of our kindergarten through third grade classes in Onslow County today, there should be, as of yesterday, no class that has more than 23 students, with one exception, and that exception is what we worked on yesterday with our board, which was new. As Ms. Thomas indicated, there were some new things that came out, and there was a waiver that came out for enhancement teachers. And let me tell you what enhancement teachers are. We're not talking about the regular classroom, what we know as kind of the home room, the reading, the math, the social studies. The enhancement teachers are PE, art, music. So there is a waiver for those classes. We needed that, the superintendents met, the state superintendent came out with a full big waiver for that, but it is just for this school year. So we do have a waiver for RP and music this school year to go to 23. Now, I want you to look at what happens next year, 18, 19. So you see our LEA average max drops again to 18, 16, 17, 17. You say, "Well, that's only three kids, and we want smaller class sizes." Well, everybody in this room wants us to have smaller class sizes. That's a great thing. It's a good idea to have smaller class sizes in these small areas. However, there is an impact to that. And I just want to give you a little example. In Onslow County, we have roughly, roughly 26,000 students, 26,500. Let's just use 26,000. We have 13 grade levels, kindergarten through 12, so that's about approximately 2,000 students per grade level. If you take the first four grade levels, kindergarten through third, that's about 8,000 students. That's why I'm using this simple example. If you divide that by 20, which is what we did this year, that's about 400 students per, you know, the 400 classrooms, I'm sorry. If you look at what's got to happen next year, and remember it was 18, 16, 17, 17, I'm just using 17, so this would be like a second or third grade. We would need 700 additional classrooms, um, excuse me, 70 additional, 700, 70 additional classrooms. That would be a lot.
Just gave Steve a heart attack.
He said he wanted to confuse us with numbers.
We're going to need 70, I'm sorry, 70 additional classrooms in this example. Now, what we did, we went back and did our own calculations using actual students and the actual numbers, and it turns out that we need for next year 51. Now, this is on top of, this is on top of the ones that we already have to hire, okay? We hire about 300 teachers a year, okay? This is going to be in addition to that. So the problem for me in hiring is, one, where are we going to find all these teachers, first of all? And for Steve and everybody in this room, is where are we going to put them? Because this becomes a space issue. It will impact all of our elementary schools. So here are three things that we're going to do. We did this last year, because this isn't the first year, it's kind of phased in. We're going to do the same thing again next year, but it still going to cause us some issues. So one of the things, I told you that 4 through 12, there is no, you know, class size restriction on those. So what happens is those grade levels through 4 through 12 are going to increase yet again. Those numbers will go up, class size numbers. So the other things that it will do is it will cause us to eliminate or transfer some of our support programs. I'll just give you an example, like pre-K, for example. We may have to end up moving pre-K classrooms from one school to another because we've got to have that space at that school. The other thing that's going to do is our enhancement teachers that I talked about earlier, the RP and music, we're going to have more of those folks on cars, so they're going to have to go from one classroom to the other. And I don't know if you've been in classrooms before, but that's probably, and we talked about yesterday, it's probably one of the most unprofessional things to do to a person is to, especially an art teacher. They've got all this stuff, and they're having to move it from one place to another. It's going to create some issues. So those are the three things, rather than that, that we're going to do, but then we're going to have to work out some additional space, and that's where Steve comes in. And I'll come back in just a moment to kind of wrap up.
Thanks, Dr. Collins.
Yep.
So let's talk about space for a few minutes. One of the things I did want to mention is, when we talked about the options that we needed to do for teachers, another thing that we did for this year is we added seven additional mobile classrooms to accommodate some of the space already that we had addressed for this current year. Next year is a whole different thing that we have to look at, because this year, we had a, our class size requirements weren't as strict as they are going forward, and in that process, we had to look at how we're going to, how many spaces we're actually going to need. You're going to see a lot of numbers, and I apologize for throwing a lot of numbers at you, but the only way to look at this is by going through the numbers. So we consolidated some, but some of the things you do need to know is, when we used the numbers this year, we used the most current numbers we had, and that's the 40th day membership numbers, okay? Normally, when we do our reporting to the state and for other purposes, we use our average daily membership numbers. But with House Bill 13, what we have to do is we have to look at that day's membership numbers at any given time. So we're not looking at average daily membership, we're looking at daily membership at any given time. So what we did was we took the most current number we could before the meeting, which is the 40th day, which was last Thursday, and these were the numbers that we looked at for each school in each grade level. Okay? When we did that, what we noticed is that we needed 151 permanent classroom spaces, that's the brick and mortar. But if we factored in the mobile classrooms, we needed 45 additional mobile classrooms. This means that all elementary schools will be impacted. Some will be impacted critically, some will be just consuming more space, because we do have some additional space in the classroom, okay? The critically impacted schools, there are going to be nine of them, would need, need, need additional classroom space. So what you have in your packet behind the presentation, here's the numbers I was referring to. Okay? And I apologize for people too, but that was the easiest way of explaining. And so when you look at your, when you look at your numbers, what you'll see is, I've got the list on the left-hand side of all the elementary schools. Up here at the top, you'll see the classrooms needed with new legislation. You'll see I've got enhanced classroom spaces, which went into the numbers, music, art, PE, because that wasn't required by HB-13, but identified spaces for each of those programs. Then we have the pre-K, then we have kindergarten through fifth grade, and also BC. You'll see what the classroom sizes are required to be for 2018, 2019 school year. Kindergarten, as Dr. Collins mentioned, was 18, first grade 16, second grade 17, third grade 17. Fourth and fifth grade, we left at 26. Historically, we've used 26 students in fourth and fifth grade as our, as our capacity, to calculate capacities. Our allotments from the state are 24, okay? So the reason why I mention that is because while we have kindergarten in fourth grade, and the state's mandating that you have to make, stay within that limit, grades fourth through fifth, they're saying you have more flexibility. While they're allocating teachers based on an ADM of 24, we actually use 26 to give us a little more leeway. Once you see this, so if I look at the first school, I see Bell Fork Elementary. I've got three enhanced classrooms that I'm calculating in this process. I don't have any pre-K classrooms. I have 112 students projected for next year. What I've done is I've taken the 40th day count that we talked about earlier, and I added, I added 1.3% growth to that classroom size. And the reason why I did that is, over the last 10 years, our classroom growth has been approximately 1.3%. So I, because if I just calculated based on this year, I would've been, I've been out of capacity by the time school started next year, with the anticipated growth that I didn't factor in. So I had to factor that in. So what you see for kindergarten, Bell Fork Elementary, we're projecting 112 students. Does everybody see that?
Sure.
So if I have 112 students, and I have, I can only have 18 in a classroom, when I do the math, it comes up to seven classrooms that Bell Fork Elementary needs for kindergarten. It's pretty straight, straightforward math. The only thing I did want to mention about that is that if I happen to need 7.1 classrooms, remember HB-13 says I can't go over it. So 7.1 would mean I would've had to round up to eight classrooms, okay? Even though it had been just one student over, I would've had 19 students in kindergarten, would that have been two classrooms. So when I look at all the, all the grade levels and I go across, showing for Bell Fork Elementary, not including that enhanced program, I need 39 classrooms. When I canvass the facility itself and look at all the spaces that are available, we have 30 classrooms available, not including enhanced programs. So I need nine more spaces. I have four mobile classrooms over there right now, so my net, my net need is five more additional classroom spaces. Does everybody see that number right there? So when I go all the way down to that list, when you go down to the bottom of the list, what you're going to see is, if I'm just looking at brick and mortar, I need 151 spaces. Now, we've always needed spaces in the past, but with House Bill 13, that increased the space needs for the brick and mortar drastically. Also, for mobile classrooms, or for additional classroom spaces, maybe mobile classrooms, maybe other opportunities, look at, to move in some things around that we'll talk about, is 45 additional classroom spaces. If, remember I've been talking about enhanced classrooms that we haven't been including in the number? If I include enhanced classrooms in this, and I look at the net need based on all the classrooms that are available, I'll need additional 42 classroom spaces if I incorporate the enhanced classrooms as well. So it would be going from 45 classroom spaces needed up to 87 classroom spaces needed. Any questions? I know that's a lot of information, I said it quick, but the easiest way to look at this is when you look at the critical needs, the nine schools that we have a critical need for. And those are Bell Fork Elementary, Bell Fork Elementary, Dixon Elementary, Jeffersonville Elementary, Northwoods Elementary, Richland Primary, Southwest Elementary, Stateside Elementary, and Swonford Elementary. Okay, what you're seeing is 45 classroom spaces are needed, and that's, that's factoring in the models that are already outside. If we didn't factor in the models, we'd get 151 spaces, okay? The fourth and fifth grade classrooms are set at 26, and that also anticipates growth of about 1.3% for next year. And that's, that stays with the average, the 10-year average that we're looking at So some of the things that we're doing to address the classroom spaces that are needed, we're looking at additional mobile classrooms as funding permits. A mobile classroom, we do have some mobile classrooms that we may be able to move from one school to another, and a good example of that would be the old Richlands Elementary School that we're purging. We've got a new school being built, thanks to the funding permits that are provided by the county and the Board of Education. So in that process, when we move the kids over to the new elementary school, we have five mobile classrooms that we can reposition, we can repurpose, and move those over. Some mobile classrooms are 30, 40 years old, and the value of moving them over isn't going to be, it's, it's not going to be worth, worth the money to move them over because they're not in good shape, they're not in as great a shape as some of the newer ones are, and by the time you move them, you're going to put, require more work to get them back up to the same condition that you want them for the classrooms. The other thing we're looking at is relocation of pre-K classrooms. Some of our pre-K programs, we can look at potentially moving some of them around. Example, in Southwest Elementary is one that we will consider, not saying that we're going to do, but we will consider, because we have two or three pre-K classrooms over there, but we have space over Blue Creek Elementary. So that's an option of pre-K we'll get. Repurpose several areas. Now that the school system is one-to-one computing in the school system, we're going to reevaluate the use of the computer labs in the classrooms, I mean, in the schools. If we can, if we have a computer lab, that's a classroom we can save. And we also, as Dr. Collins mentioned, media, art, music, multipurpose rooms. It's draconian, and we don't like doing this, but at the same time, there's situations that we may have to put some teachers on cars. And then doubling up, and this is another thing that we don't talk too much about, but as a last ditch effort, we may be looking at is doubling up on K-3 classrooms. In other words, put two teachers in one classroom with larger capacity for students. Long-term solution, and I know the ideal solution, but would be to build four additional elementary schools, okay? And I know we have a funding policy in place that's helping us out tremendously and stuff. At the same time, though, with House Bill 13, we do have an immediate need that we're trying to address as well. Any questions so far on this?
Yeah, Steve, I wanted to ask.
Yes, sir.
If, if what you're saying, and we follow, follow the law by the letter, and we got, or we have 19 students in one classroom, even though that's one student over, that by following the letter of the law would require adding another classroom, and that would add, have to add another teacher because you can't have, according to the statute.
That's right. Well, while our teachers, our teachers in our classrooms, there's a correlation between them, remember some of our schools, I mean, our schools have different capacities, and so we may not have a one-to-one relationship with teachers, but in this situation right here that you were talking about, if we went to 19, then we'd have to have two teachers, and we'd have to have two classrooms.
Well, let me ask you, if this is not just for Onslow County, this is a statewide, statewide, we're not talking about getting our legislators to change it for us, it'd have to be a statewide movement to change it, but what would be, what would be a comfortable K through 3, what would be a comfortable classroom number with one teacher that, that a teacher could reasonably control, and I guess they have teacher's age, too? You still have that program where you got teacher's age?
And their share, their share.
Yeah, but that would be classified as a little teacher as far as this law goes, but what would be a comfortable?
Now, I'll, I'll, how about the facilities, facilities guys?
And I can tell you, I can tell you, I had like 40 people in my class.
Historically, what we've used.
And I turned out pretty good.
Historically, what we've used in the past, we're out of passing calculations, and what we presented to our Board of Education and the County Commissioners in the past, was about 21 students per class for the low grade levels. Now, that being said, I think Dr. Collins would probably have better answers for that.
Yeah, well, the answer is, it depends, you know, on the, on the group of kids that you have and the teacher, as to how comfortable you'd be. I think the idea of lower class size not only comes from the fact that that sounds good, but there's a lot of research that shows that, you know, the lower your class size is, the more one-on-one time you have with students, obviously, the better.
Well, I understand that, I was just saying, I was trying to find out what, what would be a comfortable level.
I think 20, I think 20 is a good number.
So if, if it came out to, and I'm not saying we're going to lobby our legislator to do anything, but if they came out that we would increase, allow the increase of 20 students, how, what kind of shape would we be in now? What, what kind of shape?
Well, we're in pretty good shape now with 20, because that's what we're doing right now.
So we wouldn't have to be looking at building four schools and...
Well, we'd still have to build schools because of growth, but this accelerates that, because now you're talking about growth and you're reducing class size. So that's why it's kind of a double whammy right now. But that's actually one of the things, because our board asked us, well, what can we do to help? Well, here's some things. The first one was that waiver that I talked about earlier, that came, you know, from the state, state superintendent Mark Johnson said, "Okay, I've heard you, state super, superintendent, we need to get something in place this year for enhancement teachers." That's the RP and music. And let me tell you why that is, okay? I've got a kindergarten class of 22 students, and I send them to PE, they go to a PE teacher. But there's an EC class over here with four kids in it that needs to go to PE, too. So they send their four, and now you've got 26, now you're over. So that was happening all over the state, and everybody was saying, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we can't, we've got to do something about it." So there is a waiver for this year, our board approved it on Monday, so we've got it for this year for enhancement teachers. The other thing that we can look at is exactly what you were talking about, Jack. Can we go back to this year's LEA average, which is 20? Now, that's, that would give us some cushion.
Manageable.
It would be more manageable, it would be, obviously, because you're going from 20 to 18, 16, 17, 17. So yeah, that would be, that would be really good, but that's one thing that we, right now, it's in law, we're going, we're going to have to follow the law for next year, unless there's some additional waivers. And I know the superintendents meet on a regular basis, and they're talking about this off, and look, some counties, it may not be a big deal, you know, but in these larger counties, and we're the 12 largest, it's going to be a big deal, it's going to cause some issues.
Well, I was going to ask, ask this question, too.
Royce has a comment.
I have seen, I have seen counties that the student population is, is wrong, and I guess that's a blessing for, for those folks. But let me ask Steve, and on the 40th day, we, we take a depth finder and find out what kind of increase we have in our student population. What percent, wasn't it like 316 this year?
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers that you use, normally, historically, we'd use the average daily membership from the second month.
Okay, what percent of that 316 were K through 3?
Okay, out of the 300, looking at numbers, we had the closest number I have for you, Jack, is the 20th, 20th day membership number was, was 332 student increase. Of that 332...
Of course, we had an increase last year, too.
Right. We had 287 of them were elementary school kids. So the majority, I would say, I would say over 80%, if I was just going to do a quick BS in my head, over 80% of the student population growth that we see is coming from the elementary school.
K through 3 or?
K through 5.
K-5.
But we, we've got, we've got a little bit more black, population blacks on four grade four and five, right?
And at the same time, we, we lost four, is that right, four NC pre-K classrooms because we had to use those classrooms for the new K-3 stipulations.
And we went into situations like this, too. Another good example for this year is the Dixon area. We knew Dixon Middle School was built, and because we knew the population growth was so, so drastic over in the Dixon area, we took the fifth grade from the elementary school and brought it over to Dixon Middle School. That was about 100...
Is that for space purposes?
That was for space purposes.
Which still hadn't had teachers.
And we brought the teachers over with them, okay? But now that Dixon Elementary School's a K-4 school, this year, they saw unprecedented, unprecedented growth again, anyway. They saw another 89 students come in to study in elementary school. So we, while we took 160 out, 90 of them came back in, and so we didn't really see that much, we saw a little bit of decrease in student population, but not the, not the hope that we were going to see, not what we anticipated, because we saw a drastic increase in student population in the Dixon area.
Royce.
Thank you, Mr. Ben.
It just seemed like for us, the, the lack of flexibility in...
Yeah, it just seems like for us, the lack of flexibility in the statute is the real, is the real issue, right?
As far as it does.
I was going to say, before House Bill thirteen, this would have been automatic. House Bill thirteen came in to provide seventy-five percent of the flexibility. Because it was you going from night to day. At the end of this year, you lose all flexibility.
I gotta believe that some counties aren't going to be able to meet this demand. And so what are the punitive measures that you build into House Bill thirteen if you don't meet the goal?
Well, first, they take, super tenant, they take my salary, that's number one. You can have that. But really, what's really going to impact is how it's funded. They're even talking about making legislation that if it's not met, you're penalized by legislation in terms of funding to your district.
Is that already built into the bill now, given the punitive measures?
Yes.
Which is just going to compound it. We already can't afford it, and now they're going to take more money from us.
But if I can say, why is it an impact for this, both boards here? As you can see, we're already in a district that's growing considerably in terms of what our needs are for facilities. This, this bill right here squeezes us to a point that we have to make decisions that is going to cost personnel and literally not have space, is what it comes down to. When you start making gyms in the classrooms and you're making decisions on people's employment, that's what this bill is going to impact. When I talked to Senator Brown, for districts growing like Onze County is, I would think there would be a waiver for growth, especially in a military district like we are. There's some considerations to be considered so we can meet the demands, Mark, that you're talking about. Because this is going to be a major problem for next year, and that's the reason they delayed it for more a year with the House Bill thirteen. But it's going to be painstaking when you start combining classrooms up into two, in one classroom.
One other thing, are our multipurpose rooms already designed to, have the temporary walls? Is, were they already designed for that?
Yeah, I think it depends on which school. I think some of them are, some of them aren't.
Case by case basis, we do have some temporary walls where the chorus usually sits in the back on the stage area. But most multipurpose rooms are pretty open, so we would have to partition them up. We'd have to put in temporary partitions initially and then figure out, we're going to have to construct classrooms after that.
I'd like to follow up on that. I was the arts coordinator for the school system back in the, starting in eighty-nine. And I remember what it was like before then. I think, Mr. Brian, your daughter was down at Swansboro. What few schools had multipurpose rooms, I can tell you, they put about eight or ten classrooms in there. Partitions. They took stages and divided them in two. Mr. Wiggins, were you at Juana? Mr. Rich, I mean, you, you had to look for every nook and cranny to teach.
Salwell's High School, we had two classrooms in the cafeteria, so I remember those days very well.
That wasn't conducive to good, to good learning, to teaching and learning.
Well, complex situation. We had that, we had classes in our cafeteria, we took our auditorium, had petitions in it, had to petition it off. I had four classes in there at one time. I had twelve teachers, this was at the high school level. So you can just imagine what K through three in this area would be. I had twelve teachers flooding every period, every day. So they were living on a cart. They would take their cart and their stuff. They were in one classroom, one first period, second period, they had to move. Well, that's not good for them. That's not very professional. I don't know many bankers that move from office to office during the day. But it's also not good for students at the high school level and little folks too. Because it's all about relationships. Mark, you develop relationships with students. If you were moving around all day and those students that had developed relationships with you, maybe they'd come back during lunch or during, to see you. Where do they find you? And it's all about relationships. So we've, we've been there and we're going to be there again, I guess.
If you don't, I'd like to mention one more thing, and I'll stay out of the numbers after, I promise. But Board of Education and County Commissioners, through the Joint Education Funding Formula, approved us building a new school over at Steve Park, a new elementary school to replace Richlands Elementary. When we, when we built the school, Board approved us going from an eight-hundred-and-fifty-student school up to a thousand-student school because the funding was incorporated stuff, we were able to save some money and be able to try and put more capacity in the school, try to save some money for the county and the community. With House Bill thirteen coming in, we built a thousand-student school. House Bill thirteen came in, once it was signed, that school went back down to eight-hundred-and-fifty students. Because that's the capacity constraints that we received just by, just by the law. So we built it for a thousand based on our old capacity numbers. With the new law coming in, went down to eight-hundred-and-fifty. And that's what you're seeing across the board with all the elementary schools, we're seeing decreasing.
I'm going to kind of break this down, Barney Sahl, for me. So let me understand this with HP thirteen. So they have reduced the limit of students per classroom.
Right, right.
So now it's taking the funding burden and placing it on us down at the local county level. Has the state thought of extra funding for schools throughout North Carolina? Or is there any move in place for possible legislation for extra school funding? Because, I'll be honest with you, this sounds ridiculous to me with the math. It makes absolutely no sense. It's costing us, the county, money for a bill that I just don't understand. Why, they, they understand that there's an increasing growth as far as students are concerned. Especially what you said, Onze County, we're a military district, okay? You've got a military district up in Craven County, you've got one in Wayne County. I mean, did they not, did the legislature did not see this?
I don't think, personally, I don't think that they understood the consequences of their actions, what would happen. Because now, with the increase in needing classrooms, you also need teachers, and they pay for those teachers. So there's a, there's another burden that they need to address. But I really, I like to have faith that they did this with all good intentions, but I don't think they understood the consequences down the road. We have had dialogue with them, and of course, the, this bill, Bob's our legislative guy, so he'll correct me if I'm wrong. The bill originated in the House, they had a chance to bring that back up, and they chose not to. So at least the waiver that we received last week is going, waiver option is going to help us somewhat, but it's not going to cure this.
Well, I guess my, trying to wrap my head around this concept with HP thirteen, which, I'll tell you right now, it makes no sense to me. Now, I understand, I'm not an educator, I understand the concept of more one-on-one teaching. I mean, I grew up in elementary school and went to college, I mean, you had thirty, forty students. Like Jack said, I turned out pretty good. So from a cost perspective, listening to what you're saying, you know, we're shifting people, we have mobile classrooms. Wouldn't it make more economic sense to hire more teachers?
Let me try to break it down for you from a legislative standpoint. I've been trying to track this pretty closely over the last two or three years. There is a major disconnect between the Department of Public Construction, the North Carolina School Boards, and the state legislatures. There are some legislatures that have been attempting to get information for several areas of the schools to break it down by student level in order to look at what we're paying for. There is a concern with some legislators that the monies that we are getting from the state to pay for our arts, PE, and music classes are being diverted. Actually, we don't get money for those, they're included in overall numbers. But the numbers, the money that we get for our regular teachers, not the enhanced teachers. The way most school districts use it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that most school districts do that, if you have twenty-six authorized and you put twenty-eight students into that class and you've got two extra students in a classroom, we have allotments each year that the state gives us for teachers. And it's based on the population. So if you put twenty-six or thirty students in a classroom and you get paid for twenty-six, there is an exponential value that you carry out through the entire school district that allows you then to take that funding allotment and pay for an art teacher. There are some members of legislature who believe that we're hiding the P because that's the process that's being utilized throughout all the school districts in the North Carolina. It's not hiding the P, as I understand it, several years ago, those teachers were paid and we were allotted money for that, but they rolled it out of their budget several years ago. We still have a continuing need for arts, music, and PE. There's nobody on the school board that's advocating that we do away with those. No one in the state that's in the education system that's advocating to do away with those. And really, there's not very many in the legislatures advocating to do away with those. It's just a matter of the accounting principle. And I believe that they've instituted this, the numbers have been out there for several years. We're not just jumping into this. The sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen numbers that we're currently getting, that's per student or per classroom, are currently being enforced upon us, okay? Because the legislature was under the impression they weren't getting correct numbers from DPI. And they've enforced this process. The numbers have always been out there. For several years, we've had caps, but we've been able to go over those caps because there was no legislation per se that said you can't go over those caps. Now they're trying to force us back into the box. They did not think about this. There was last year, I believe, a bill, or maybe two bills, that went out there for additional classroom sizes, i.e. a statewide construction building bill for several million dollars that was put on the table. I believe it died in committee. It never made it out to, to get out there. So, but that is something that's being considered. But that bill is separate from what this legislation has dictated. If you watched, and if you watch and read the bills, and if you understand the process, there's a little coordination between each of those bills. A legislature in the House may propose a bill to cap class sizes, or it may come from the Senate. On the House side, you may end up with a bill that comes in to increase spending for overall school construction. They all go to committees. There's an education committee, there's a finance committee. And it could get stuck in one of those committees and never be heard by the entire legislative body of the House or the Senate. So it is chinned. The information over here, never is shared over here because some of the legislatures don't bother to get involved in that process because if it's not before the legislature, the entire body of the legislature, they're not going to be reading those bills for the most part. And if they're not part of that committee, they're never going to get introduced to it. That's why when you listen to the legislative process and you listen to these legislators talk, sometimes the first time they've seen that bill is the night before, they're going to vote on it the next day. So the system's broke, but we're paying for it.
I was just going to say that. It sounds like the system's broke. And it, it just bothers me because they're putting some restrictions on you that I don't think or write or have been thought through, period. And it absolutely makes no sense when you see an increasing growth in students. Again, I'll reiterate, especially in this area. And then now you're restricting classroom size, which is going to cause a burden on us to meet the requirements per this bill so that we can provide the adequate classrooms. And to me, it makes absolutely no sense because you're right, Bob, somebody didn't think this through or they didn't come from an educator's perspective. And that's what, that's the thing that's bothering me. And I understand all the stats and I understand all this. And believe me, I've been looking at these stats thoroughly and looking at the need for how many extra classrooms and stuff like that. I get that. My concern is the HP thirteen bill. I mean, there's nothing I can do about it, I understand it, but it makes absolutely no sense to me from a layman's perspective.
Well, that's not necessarily true. There is something we can do as boards. If we don't believe that the bill is a just bill, i.e. it's forcing counties to do things that we would not ordinarily or near need to do, then we need to go back and talk to our legislators and see if we can't get that amended or get it waived up to the numbers of twenty, that we could at least accommodate that. Then let's go forward. All of this is predicated down, and you heard this earlier, we've got mobile trailers out there that have been out there for thirty or forty years. Well, you know, when something's on a property for thirty, forty years, it's not temporary. It, it loses its meaning, but we have put those out there and kept them out there because our continuous growth process has occurred. We can't do without, we could not live without the portable classrooms that we have currently on the properties. And this legislation is making us either increase that or make other adjustments to the classroom, the permanent classroom sizes, and move personnel, personnel around to accommodate to that. So this is just symptomatic of a long-term problem. But this is a problem that we have to address right now because this happens in ten months.
And two things, as an educator, and you hit it right on the head. I understand when they have allotted these teachers, you are exactly right. They have made, and we know, all of us know how important PE, music, and art. I have a daughter that makes her living from art through her pottery. But we have children, those are their skills, those are their passions. But the state has made no allotment for those positions. So yes, we played with those figures, we had to. Where else were we going to come up with those teachers and those positions? And we don't want to lose them. My second thing is, and we keep talking about this, we're in a situation, this is not a good problem to have. But on the other hand, this is a growing county. And we're not going to stop. So that is a good problem to have. We're not closing schools. We're fighting to build them to keep up with our growth. And I feel sorry for those counties, Jack, that you were talking about before. They're losing people and they're closing schools.
I was just going to say, when we talk about House Bill thirteen, before that, the General Assembly says, next year, you will lose all flexibility. House Bill thirteen was a Band-Aid, provided seventy-five percent of the flexibility. At the end of this year, the Band-Aid comes off. And people talk about doom and gloom. It can happen overnight. Partitions in the cafeterias, in the libraries, and on your stages, it can happen overnight. We mentioned in nineteen, early on Monday, about in nineteen ninety-four, a hundred and ninety mobile classrooms. And we never promised the community that we're going to eliminate those today. I think you said, even with additional classrooms and new schools, how many closed?
Approximately two hundred, I mean, mobiles are used for, I mean, mobiles are used for classrooms. We have some additional for storage, but...
So we, the balloon keep is panning.
Well, there's three points here. One, I agree with you. That there should, we should have a louder voice in legislation to show our dissatisfaction because this is, again, I'm trying to wrap my head around this HP thirteen and I don't kind of prolong this point, but it just makes no sense to me. Totally understand what you're saying, that the Band-Aid comes off, and that's what I'm afraid of. But getting back to what you said, what I'm afraid of what's going to happen is they're going to put these mandates on us, and then we're going to lose the enhancement features. In other words, we're going to lose PE. We're going to lose art, all of these things that are, to me, that are important to the students. I mean, I loved PE. I actually loved art and all that stuff. I mean, that's where socially our students are going to grow. But it seems to me that because of this HP thirteen, they're putting a clamp on that and they're taking away some of these, these...
The thing about it is...
Some of these teaching things or some of these classes that are much needed. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm a little upset because it forces the financial burden now down to us.
Yes, it does.
Which is very, very heavy.
I think it's inevitable, what Commissioner Knapp is talking about, is some communities are going to make those decisions to get rid of orchestra, to limit band and music classes.
Yes, they are.
But that's when the public's going to put pressure on the state legislature to modify the legislation. So hopefully, we won't reach that point, but I think some communities will have to make those decisions.
Well, Mark, I brought it up Monday, that my biggest fear with this is not as much the positions as it is the classroom space and to meet this forty-five. We're probably going to have to move some art rooms and some PE rooms. And I'm scared to death that once we ever make that decision, we'll never get them back.
Mark, on the flip side of that, I know your wife teaches in elementary and was the administrator, so she can attest to this. Once you get to the point that you have to create a new classroom, it may be in the middle of the year, we have teachers who are asking, Barry, please don't take all of my kids and split them up now. We've got too much going on. We're doing well with twenty-six in a classroom or whatever number they have to meet. So it's making us make decisions that are not good education decisions based on what our legislators are requiring us to do.
I just think HP thirteen has not taken into consideration the students whatsoever and the relationship with the teachers, and that's just my thought of this. And from a county commissioner's standpoint, I'm looking at a monster right now. Okay, I'm looking at a financial burden that we're going to have to somehow meet, you know? And this is going to be a tough one, to be honest with you. Because I just don't understand the logic behind this bill, what they're trying to do. And I agree with you too, because once these programs are removed, you'll never get them back. once these programs are removed, you'll never get them back, and that'll be a travesty to the students.
Do y'all hear from your counterparts these concerns as well? Because I'm sure that...
We hear the same thing statewide. When we went to the Association of County Commissioners Commission, it's the same thing, the counties destroyed and students. I've got a question about Richlands Elementary. Did you say that that, this requirement has bumped that school back to no more than eight-hundred and some students? Now, we can't have...
Possibly.
So, we appropriate the money and build a school big enough to hold growth, and then they turn around and take that space that we've already committed to building and paid for?
I think it was a good idea. I think that they really wanted smaller class sizes. I just don't think it was thought out all the way, as to what would happen.
Makes you wonder, do they listen?
Exactly.
Well, I think the biggest problem for us outside of that is not enough teachers. We're going to have to find fifty-one more additional teachers when we're already not finding enough now. Our universities are not putting out teachers like they used to, so we're not only facing a shortage of space, but we're going to be facing a major shortage of teachers that will have no teachers for those spaces.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this question. When we open up Richlands Elementary out of Ste. Park, is there any salvageable classroom space at the old Richlands Elementary that can be recreated?
I think there is, and I think...
When we connect fifth grade halls, approximately, classrooms that we're going to look at repurposing for Trixler, or possibly another program that we need to...
And my next question is, Dixon Middle School is up and running now, and that was, whoever had the idea about moving the fifth grade over there, I thought that was good because that uses valuable space, and I see some folks taking credit for that. The old Dixon Middle School, is there, isn't some of that park, some of that buildings are usable?
Yes, we've got about eight classrooms there, and the gym will be an auxiliary over at the high school.
And our growth is in Dixon-Sneadberry area, Richlands area, maybe Swansboro-Hubert area.
Carolina Forest.
I don't know.
Let me share something with you, because I was employed here, and that was one of the jobs I had, was to work with new construction. When Carolina Forest was built, the first year it opened, it had two wings. It had two wings that were...
No houses.
No, not many houses, but it had two wings that were empty, and the community said, oh, y'all aren't going to feel that, you've just overspent your money. The next year, both wings were full, and now we need another school right on its campus because it's so crowded. So, yeah, it's ten mobile units. So, the growth is there, and we're making the best of every space that we have, and I'm glad that we could share that with you and let you sit in a different light.
And Jack, you're right on target. As a young educator, I was at Dixon for seventeen years. We struggle to have three hundred students. Now, they're over nine hundred.
I know, it's amazing.
So, they're bursting at the seams, but by using those classrooms from Dixon Middle there, that's going to help us.
I think what it is...
Some of my board members want to take a short break.
Thanks for saving us.
Well, that's a great, healthy discussion that we had. As we end this in a little while, if you have any other questions, I certainly hope that you will take the liberty to ask those or to respond with comments. Next, I'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Jeff Hollen, to come forward. Probably familiar with Jeff. We just got an audit report that'll be presented to us, and it was quite complimentary to Jeff, so he's got a little big head today.
We are so glad to have the commissioners with us today, and thought this would be a great time to just do a brief review of the Joint Education Funding Policy and all the parts to that. And then you have a handout, and also here on the PowerPoint, which is going to follow on there. The Joint Education Funding Policy was adopted back in two thousand and fourteen, both through the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education. And this created a partnership here in Onslow County to benefit not only the students of Onslow County schools, but also the citizens of Onslow County. What the Joint Education Funding Policy does is it provides an objective method of determining funding levels each year, and that benefits the county and the school system in their long-range fiscal plan. The Joint Education Funding Policy has three legs. The first leg involves the annual current expense budget, the second leg, the annual capital budget, and the third leg is the Long Range Capital Improvement Program. We'll take a look at each one of these. So, the first leg, the annual current expense budget. What that covers is operational type of expenses and structural expenses that are either unfunded by the state or underfunded by the state. And some examples of that include the teacher salary supplements, some of the teacher assistance, technology items, utilities, insurance, maintenance costs, things like athletic coaches, band directors, academic derby, and the list goes on and on. The annual current expense budget formula is a pretty basic formula. There are two parts to that. First data point is the average daily membership, and that is multiplied by the second data point, which is the average of what all the counties across the state provide to their school districts on a per pupil basis. On the average daily membership, we've talked about the significant growth that we've had here in the county, and we did grow on average three hundred students per year, and that's ongoing. In a few minutes, I'll show you a chart that shows that, and it continues on and on. In the calculation for this fiscal year that we're in now, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the calculation is based on ADM of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five students. And the calculation uses the state average per pupil appropriation figure of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So, when you multiply that together, that comes to this year's appropriation for the local current expense of forty-nine point three million. We are the twelfth largest district in the state, so we have pretty massive need when you're dealing with providing for over twenty-six thousand students. So, while that forty-nine point three million dollars may seem like a lot of money, and it is, but when you look at all the needs that we have to address and everything, it is, you know, an appropriate adequate level for us based on this Joint Education Funding Policy, but it's certainly not an extraordinary level. When that is calculated, you have to keep in mind that those data points that we're using are historical data points. So, the funding that's calculated for this year, that student number is actually last year's student number. If you think about it, when we're providing this information during the budgeting process last spring, as you're developing your budget, and that, at that point in time, we didn't have a crystal ball on knowing how many students we were going to have this year in the last year's student number.
What percent of our kids are federally connected? Will you receive an amount from the federal government per student? What percent of our kids are federally connected?
And there are different types of connections there, whether they're military dependents, or whether they're civil service dependents, and there's a complex formula they go through in funding for Impact Aid on that. But in general, just the total number of connections, it's about thirty-eight percent, using that thirty-eight to forty-two percent range is usually where that falls. So, we're using historical data points, we're using one-year-old student numbers, and on the average per pupil appropriation, keep in mind that at back in the spring, when we were giving you those numbers for this year's budget, that year was not completed yet. So, there were no state average numbers for that. We had to go back the year before that to get the average. So, that number is two years old. So, by definition, when we multiply those together, that is always going to lag behind what would be the actual need for this year. But if you look at where we came from, years ago, before this funding form was in place, and some of you that have been on the four quarter walk, remember those slides I would put up that would show how far behind we were from state average funding. And year in and year out, we were running eight, nine, ten million dollars below the funding level that we've been funded at state average. Going to this funding formula has corrected that situation, and that we continue to grow each year, it continues to track. Even though it does lag behind a little bit, it still tracks forward, and we don't get into those massive depths of situations there. And we're nowhere near the top, like Dare County, at four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars per student. We're nowhere close to that.
Jeff, do you know what the figure is for the amount the federal government contributes for that thirty-eight percent that are federally connected?
Well, the funding on Impact Aid is, again, is a very complex formula, and they assign different weights of students, depending on whether they're the military dependents, the off-base, and all that. In total, we receive possibly four million dollars a year in Impact Aid funding that helps support our overall operations. And then, you know, we look at that, we have unique needs here with such a transient community, both in students and also in faculty. We have additional needs that we have to address for those students, and so that assists us in those costs. Other communities have different sets of needs and different sets of unique funding in their counties that we have to... All right, the second leg of the formula is annual capital budget. This provides funding for repairs and renovations, things like roofing, HVAC, resurfacing and paving, safety and security issues, and the list goes on. This funding, when I came here in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, was at about three million dollars per year, and that stayed stagnant for several years. Then, if you recall, during the Great Recession that we had, that began in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine era, the county had slashed budgets, part of that was slashing the annual capital outlay budget in half, and we did, fortunately, through this funding formula, had a progressive step plan to bring us back to that pre-two thousand and three level of three million dollars. Now, obviously, over that period of time, we have seen significant growth. There've been new schools built, new classroom expansions built, and all of our facilities have continued to age over that time, requiring more and more needs. So, getting back just to the pre-two thousand and three level of three million, it does not provide everything we need to address all of those major annual concerns of regrooving, HVAC, et cetera, that we should be doing. The facilities that we have to maintain now are three point eight billion square footage, and there are thirty-nine sites with over fourteen hundred acres of land that we have to take care of. In your handout, you have this sheet that says the capital budget helps support the visiting assets, and we were asked to write this for you as documents Mr. Myers has put together, that just kind of puts this funding in perspective. When you look at the average age of our facilities of forty-two years, and six hundred and eighty-one million dollars in insured value of property, look at the square footages we were taking care of, acres we were taking care of, and doing all that with a three million dollar budget puts that funding at a zero point four four percent of the current asset value. And if you compare that to using that for a home, let's say if there were a home, forty-two year old house, that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, that means you would have to maintain that facility on only four hundred and forty dollars a year. So, that kind of puts in perspective the challenges that Mr. Myers faces each year in trying to prioritize needs for annual capital budget. Fortunately, in the funding policy, there is provisioned there for the funding level to be adjusted considering impacts, such as price indexes, assets that we have to maintain, and service delivery requirements. And so, we will be working with county staff, identifying some of these data points that are needed, such as the square footages that have been added, those type things, as future planning is being prepared. The third leg of the funding formula is regarding the Long Range Capital Improvement Program, and this provides for major construction projects, of new buildings, new additions to current campuses, and could include major improvements or renovations that are needed. What we have in place right now is a perpetual plan with a ten-year planning horizon. So, in that initial Joint Education Funding Policy, that initial ten-year period, there were projects laid out to be undertaken during that ten years. The plan is set up so that, we had meetings, just like the one today, to talk about current needs, the updates on population growth, updates on new requirements like K-three class sizes and those impacts, so that we can continually keep a ten-year planning horizon in place. Much of the focus today has been on the K-three class size restrictions, and how that has accelerated our needs for facilities, but even if that had not happened, there were great needs already facilitated by us. In the package, you also have a chart with the thirty-year ADM history, and this just points out a nice, consistent, steady line going up. And what you see throughout that period is more and more students coming to our schools. Obviously, as we add those students, we need more seats for them. So, even without the K-three class size, there are additional needs, and that's why those additional school projects have been already identified in the plan. Did you ever...
I'm just going to make the comment, and again, this is very interesting, having been in the county a long time, and how much we've grown, but we're averaging over three hundred students a year, and if we take this out ten years from now, we'll be close to thirty thousand students. It's not like Field of Dreams, build it, and they will come. They're coming.
We'll never mind, they're still coming.
And I think we said that before, they're coming, you know, with all our work with ORED and so forth, they're coming.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. This is a chart that Mr. Myers updates each year, and he's gathering the latest information to update the chart for this year, but this is basically a breakdown of our capacity for each of our schools, with the red areas here, this is the elementary section, you can see it's totally blocked out, nearly all blocked out in red, showing that we are already out of capacity, with other schools being near capacity, and so, even before looking at the K-three class size, and that's not in your handout, because we don't have the updated one yet, but just, based on your comment, I thought it was... But just based on your comment, I thought it was important to point out that we were already in a situation with dire capacity needs without the K-3 class size. And continuously the growth of 300 students a year, and now the K-3 class size has just accelerated our needs. So again, we're looking at the upcoming 10-year horizon. And that initial list of projects that were listed, there was the Dixon Middle School, which you know is being completed, with the replacement Richland Elementary School, which is under construction now and will be opening up next fall. And then beyond that, there were also listed three additional schools and one school expansion. The additional schools were set to have design start dates in 2018, 2020, and 2022, with construction being completed in 2021, 2023, and 2025. In other words, a new school each two years. So in keeping with the 10-year horizon to keep that on the plan, it would seem appropriate to place that next project out there with a design date starting in 2024 and an opening date in 2027. So part of what I think we wanted to do today was present these needs, let you know that we're already at or overcapacity in most places. We continue to grow, and we have accelerated issues from K-3 class size. So that we could ask for your county manager, county finance officer, to go back and review their financial side of the plan with your financial consultants, look at adding in that additional school out at the edge of the 10-year horizon, and also explore any opportunities there may be for accelerating time tables to address these needs that have been presented. And that is the end of my presentation, unless you have any questions that...
Questions or comments for Mr. Holloman?
Do good job.
Yeah, we know that most everybody around this table is familiar with that funding formula, but every time I hear it, I learn a little bit more about the depth and the importance of it. And I think that it's been very good for the school side, and I think as well as for the commissioner's side of that.
Also, Ms. Thomas, as we go to our meetings across this state, we're being asked about that. And I'll tell you, the other systems are in envy that we have come to a conclusion and have a formula. They wish they had one.
Madam Chair, I was wondering, since you're looking at the first presentation and the K-3 situation and what's involved with that. Do you think, I talked to Superintendent Stout about it, but do you think it would be beneficial and productive for the two boards separately to submit a resolution to our legislators to try to either get waivers or maybe to look at adjusting the class size, K-3? And I was talking to, you know, asking Barry that specific question. Probably realistic to maybe expanding it to 20 students. Do you think that would be beneficial?
I do, in fact, I have right here one of the next steps about working together to address the K-3 class size legislation.
I mean, you get right down to it, the fact is, if the law doesn't change, I mean, there's no way we're going to have three new schools up in the next year anyway. So you got to either, I guess you got to plan for a solution, or at least even temporary in case we don't get the law changed, is that what y'all are working on?
I think you saw, yeah, I think you saw some of them that Barry presented was combination classes, art, music, and V.E., floating, not having rooms, additional mobile units that become mobile communities, I call them. But those are all things that we know with this new law coming, with all the waivers, we're going to be facing that as well.
Well, the legislators have talked real hard about being military-friendly, economic-wise, for the state of North Carolina. And we're talking about the BRAC base realignment enclosures just coming up. With that in mind, and Onslow County being a friendly to the military, I think either we need to change it or try to get them to change it to go back to the 20-classroom, 20-pupil classrooms, or create a funding stream to address the mandates. Now, if they want to create a funding stream for the military communities or all the other schools in this situation, that'd be okay too. But I think we could live with some of both, and we could craft our, we could craft our resolution to address that.
Would you be open to letting the, maybe your county manager and Mr. Holloman and my Dr. Collins to get together to do that?
Absolutely.
That way, we'd be on the same page and we're not contradicting each other, even though we mean the same thing. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to echo the chairman's comments. I think what we need to do is basically what he's saying, is work together on this issue because this affects both of us, actually affects all our citizens. And, you know, you've got two governing boards here that need to get together and work this out and maybe raise the flag, so to speak, at the legislative level. Because, again, I still can't get my head wrapped around this bill because it's causing, it's causing an extreme financial burden at the county level. I mean, I applaud your efforts by what you're showing here in terms of how you can move this to there and whatever. There's so many issues to be addressed, like enhancement programs that we might lose. I really think that working together is probably the best thing to do. And I agree with the chairman's conclusion about the resolution, because maybe they'll listen. Maybe somebody up there will understand. Because I'm still not convinced that this bill took into consideration the students or the governments at the county level. Because all the burden is placed on us to meet these demands. And again, Onslow County is unique. We have, we have a transitory population here, you know, and I'd like to see some of these people that say that they're military-friendly, show it.
I think the resolution will be a good first step. Legislature doesn't go back in a session until February. And February is very close to when we're doing our budgets. So no matter what we do with the resolution, and they may or may not act on a resolution that we send up there, certainly is a good first step.
Absolutely.
But I don't think that we can stop our planning purposes. I think we have to plan for the worst, hope for the best, and somewhere in the middle, maybe we'll meet.
Well, I agree about that. We're not going to be able to operate, we're going to have to operate in the confines of the current regulation until it's changed. We know that, and that's what we're, basically what we have in this meeting today for, is see, see what we're facing and see what we're facing as far as providing the funding for it.
Well, I do think the resolution is the next step. Also, I think having private conversations with our legislators, our local legislators. They carry a lot of weight in Raleigh. And I think when they have, they're listening with empathy. That's all we can expect them to do, is to listen to us and try to understand the issue for yourselves as well as for us. We will be moving forward with our planning for next year regardless. We don't have a choice, we've got to have places for students. So we will address that. In the long term, though, I think that if, between now and the end of June, if we could have individual conversations with our people that represent us, that probably is going to go a long way.
I'm just going to, just to reemphasize what's been presented here today, and very well done. You've got two issues. We're growing, that's why we had the funding agreement established in 2014, long before class size reduction. So we've got two major issues here that we have to deal with. Sooner the better, but anyway, this is...
The, I just wonder if, is there any communication between the schools and the federal government? I'm looking at these numbers, if 40% of our kids are federally connected, that's over 10,000 kids, that we're spending $1,870 apiece for, it's costing us $19 million, and they're contributing $4 million? I don't know how you would even go about discussing that with...
Well, there are two ways to look at it. One, they are our...
They're our children.
They're our children.
Right.
And two, the Impact Aid is often inflated in our minds instead of what we actually, or when we actually receive it. But I know that Rick said, and I, Rick probably ought to answer that, responded that.
Well, you know, when you have the military, you have additional responsibilities, like our liaisons that we have, more counseling, more support programs. And actually, our devices are 101, and the virtual thing that we actually were able to add on to was a big piece of being able to receive some of the additional funds from the military. And that's what those funds, I guess, when we, when I go on the hill and lobby, and I do it twice a year because it's important for us to have that, or we would even be falling further into hole than we are now. Really, we need to keep that effort up every time I talk to a legislator about keeping that going and moving forward. The problem is, we don't get help on the land side or the construction side. That's something, if you're on the idea, you have no problems getting land. But being outside of that realm, we struggle with that. So we're always trying to find out what we can do to partner with the military in terms of, and we have yet to find the funds for building schools or providing land.
Statutorily, the way it's set up with regards to the way we pay taxes here, and I believe that adversely affects us in some way with property taxes, because there are exceptions to military that buy houses here. And if I'm not mistaken, is that right? That we don't charge them some property tax, correct?
They're treated alike if they live in the county.
They're disabled.
They're treated alike.
They're treated alike.
Only disabled have a...
The disabled.
But the disabled.
Disabled, the only waiver. It's a certain conventional that they have to be below to get that waiver. But the military, they buy house out of town, they're charged property tax just like anybody else.
So from that standpoint, they increase what our revenues are.
Well, it was instructive to see the presentation that our former county manager did a couple of years ago, when he showed us that average home sale, an average home sale has like 2.5 kids or something like that. And they pay $1,200 a year in property taxes, and of course, they cost us $1,800 apiece, so, yeah. It's not like we're breaking even on new houses. It's the commercial development that helps us in the county for as far as property tax.
Right. Well, I know that our attorney, Mr. Irwin, serves on the National Committee, and he brought back some news that they may be considering changing that formula, is that correct? Or eliminating that formula?
Yes, ma'am, it was just, I attended the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission in Rhode Island last week, and just as a form of information, it was presented to us that apparently there's a movement to consider changing the Impact Aid category to take a billion dollars from Impact Aid, reallocated in another direction for military students. But it would do away basically with Impact Aid. It's not gone anywhere, but it's out there.
And I'd like to change the direction, if we could, for just a minute, if I could have latitude to do that. We were talking about Impact Aid and the federal government's process in there, but that won't eliminate the need for more classrooms. We have a long-term need, we have short-term needs within the last, next 10 months that we absolutely have to address. But long-term, we're way behind in accounting, but trying to keep up. And we will always be way behind in accounting, trying to keep up with building classrooms for the population level. We have a well-established program that was established in 2014. Jeff mentioned possibly updating this to add additional schools in the future. As a board, we've also discussed possibly rotating the, where they're at, or moving where they're at to where we need to build schools based on current needs and future needs. And we've looked at that as quite in-depth in a couple of meetings so far with the Board of Education. And there's at least two areas in there, the Richlands we've talked about, the Dixon area we've talked about quite a bit, those are two immediate areas. Carolina Forest is also a media area. Carolina Forest, additional schools in that are way down on the list. The Dixon and the Richland area schools that we were talking about in the past and that are currently on the schedule in the future to be built, I think as two boards working together, we need to seriously look at whether or not that's going to serve our immediate needs, taking into consideration a lot of factors. One of the major factors is, is the ability to fund new schools and when we can fund them. This program is four years old when it was initiated, and the situation has changed. You guys are about to go through a reevaluation. This was created right after the last reevaluation. So I'm sensitive to the fact that we don't know what our tax base is right now until we get done with the reevaluation. We also don't know whether or not the reevaluation will provide adequate funding without having to raise additional taxes to just handle the current needs that we've got. We won't know that until the ballots come in and we see exactly what the county's got. The county has current needs, the Board of Education certainly is one of the largest, if not the largest, just like it is in the state. Public education is going to cost us money. And unfortunately, the only way that we have to deal with that is do our taxation process. If we build new schools, we have to be able to fund those. This is a well-written and, I think, a well-coordinated program that we've been in for four years. I agree with Jeff that we probably ought to look at extending that out in the future, but I think we also need to look at the potentiality for moving the schools up on the schedule. I think that it's important that we try to address the problem. We're not going to get out of the hole in two years, four years, or 10 years, we're just not. The county continues to grow, and that's a good thing. From a prosperity standpoint, that's excellent. From a tourism standpoint, that's excellent. With growth, though, comes additional issues. If we have the communities out there growing, when you build houses, and we've got several projects still in the process right now, people generally either bring children with them when they move into those houses, or through the process of being in those houses, we create more children. So we're constantly, always going to be hiding the A-ball. But I think that we can't kick the can down the road indefinitely. I think that we need to come up with a comprehensive program that looks at all aspects of this. It looks at the aspects of how much can we do right now? How much do we need to do in the future? And how far out there we can? And we have to consider the BRAC process in that as well. Because they're talking about doing the new BRAC, and BRAC basically is realignment of military facilities. I'm confident that Lejeune probably would not get impacted because we're the only major Marine Corps installation on the East Coast that handles and does the type of training that the Marine Corps needs to do that. So I think that we're good on that. But that's not 100%. We could lose the Marine Corps Air Station, and they could move everything to Cherry Point. Or they could move it to a different location. So I think we have to keep all that in consideration. But I don't think that we can continue to kick the can down the road. Now, I think that that would inquire, entail rather, that we would have to talk to bond council. We'd have to talk to the financial people and David's office and find out whether or not accelerating the schedule by a year would be realistic. Our next project is supposed to kick off in September of next year, I believe, is when we start the planning phase for the next school. That already puts us a year behind. If you start the planning... If, if you start the planning next September, that already is a year behind. We're already, in my opinion, four years behind in trying to address the problem. I've expressed the opinion, and I may be one of the few people on our board that has expressed that. I was not on the board when this was created. It is my opinion that had we built two new schools and then went back and replaced Richlands and Dixon schools, we'd be a little bit better in position in the future. We can't go back and reverse the process, we can only start from today and work forward. And I think we need to look seriously about whether or not we have, number one, the capability to build new schools sooner, how many and how large, because if you look at the size of the schools, the Dixon Middle School and the Richlands Elementary School, those are significantly higher numbers of students than what we originally put on the list and what we're forecasting. And when we build new elementary schools, we're going to have to look at that too. Increase size and class sizes and school sizes are going to increase the price tag. And if we have to go outside and purchase land, that's also going to increase that. So I think that's something we need to seriously have a discussion on. It's not something that we're going to be able to make a decision on today because there's too many factors that fit into that. But I think we need to look the elephant in the face and say, okay, this is what we've got. We've got twelve of us that need to make that decision. Let's set out and start the conversation, what do we need to do?
Well, I, in all due respect to you, I think Jeff hit on those same things that you reiterated, and I believe that both boards are, are here to, to work together to see what we can do and do our immediate needs and to move forward with that, and I think very good points.
Let me just say this. Let me just say this. I hear, I hear what you're saying, okay? So understand that we're here today because we've already been considering this several months earlier. We're already aware of the problem, we are looking the elephant in the face, we are ready to tackle the situation. But before we take any step further, we have to sit down and discuss it to see which is the most applicable way to approach this and go down this avenue. So when I hear things like that, please understand, especially the Board of Education, that we as commissioners are very serious about this, we take it very seriously, and we have a concern too, because we see the growth, okay? As far as other, other issues out there in terms of what can determine in which direction we go, we're talking about the, the revow, we have to wait for that, yes, obviously we do. But it is very, very important to us because of the, the school system, the population, this bill, HB thirteen is very concerning to us, and we're going to do everything we can to be proactive about it. But again, it's going to take a little bit of time so that we can evaluate the information. I totally agree that we're working together on this, but I think we're both well aware of the issue and aware of the, of the steiny of the road, so to speak, that is, that is presented before us. As far as BRAC is concerned, we do need to take that into consideration, but I can almost guarantee you, in my opinion, that we don't have anything to worry about Camp Lejeune or New River. Having worked there for over twenty-five years, I can tell you that those two installations are vital, and there's no move right now, even whether it be in Congress or anything else, even consider doing anything with that. In fact, it's the opposite, okay? There was a, there was a drawdown with Camp Lejeune back in, back in two thousand with a bunch of battalions leaving, for whatever reason, now they're coming back. And in fact, they're expecting more people and more units to come back here. So those are tangibles that we can't control. But the one thing we can control is, is our tenacity to fix this problem, stay focused, and I think we're all on the same sheet of music here.
We appreciate that, and I appreciate those comments. I do think that, you know, the number of construction projects that are being available for the base right now, I, I think that ten years down the road, they're going to still be doing a lot of those projects, which is good for this community.
Let me address a couple of things that Bob said about growth. If we were sitting at this table a year ago, I mean, a year, last year, at the same table, there wouldn't have been any way that we'd have been able to say, we've got three hundred and sixteen new students today. And we can't build a school based on what you might have, because we can't go to taxpayers and say, okay, we're going to go ahead and build a school just in case we grow, we can't do that. We not, we can't, we won't be able to fund it that way. We have to have those numbers. And even if, like last year and this year, we had a total of six hundred, well, that's a whole school, six hundred students, but even if we decided today, Mr. Pam, I'm going to write you a check for thirty-three million dollars for a new elementary school, it's going to be two years before we can build it.
That's right.
And we're still behind the eight ball no matter what.
You're right. That's right.
And as far as revaluation goes on the revenue stream, what I've been told is, is pretty flat, it's not going to gain much, there's going to be some that goes up, there's going to be some that goes down. The only thing we don't have a handle on yet is the commercial property, we don't know where that's going to be. But in response to your question about revenue, we have a thing that's built in that's called revenue neutral. So if the values go up or down, we can adjust the rate so we can still get the same revenue stream. And we do that, we'll do that every year. Paul familiar with that, we've done that before.
Well, you know, one of the key things too is that, and I heard you in your meeting when you're talking about a bond, if we look at a bond down the road, we've got to do a better job. The job that you all did last time was horrible. I mean, I'm going to call it like it is, because of the fact, when you come out for a hundred and seventy-five, and you turn around, oh, we'll do seventy-five, the public got upset, and they were upset with us, pretty much, and, and we overrode that. I mean, we, bond failed, but we went ahead and, and put the formula together, and that's what we've been living with. But if we do another one, I think, looks like to me we might have to be looking at that or thinking about a bond, but if we do, we've got to do a better job. Would you not agree, or?
Well, I remember we came with a hundred and forty-nine million dollar package, that's where we identified the place in those two old schools that are a hundred years old, plus the schools in the areas that we're talking about today. So we had our documentation then. So we really needed the one forty-nine, but I guess that we went back to the seventy-five, okay, we understand, but having, being a member of that board back in twenty-twelve, Mr. Williams, and knowing that we needed to replace two old schools that are a hundred years old, and thank goodness the commissioners came forth with the package and helped us with that, I have no regrets, and I would do the same thing today if you had been in those schools and see what we had in those students' experience. I have no problem today putting those two schools, replacing those two schools instead of trying to expand. So, but, you know, we, at, at that time, I guess it was like a perfect storm, but the message, the, the documentation, the data was still accurate. So it just maybe, the, the atmosphere at that time.
Where we got in trouble with the taxpayers in last reevaluation is there was a, a revaluation that came out, and the numbers required us to adjust the tax rate four, four cent in order to make the revenue neutral. That was, that would have been fine, nobody would have been paying no more or no less tax money, it would have been the same money they paid the year before, their values would have been a little bit more or a little bit less based on whatever it was. But then we had to do the schools, and then there was an additional, I believe, five cent that got added to, it ended up being a nine cent.
Nine cent.
Tax adjustment. And people didn't look at the four cent as revenue neutral, they only looked at the nine cent increase, and the commissioners, the commissioners caught it.
We caught it.
They caught it, I mean, left and right because it was a, and then the people, the values that went up in value, and then the four cent additional, and then the five cent additional for the schools and projects, that was a big hunt for some of them, a big field for the commercial guys.
I said, the commercial, man, we caught, the commercials, we caught.
I'm glad I didn't live close to them, they were calling my burning house.
Unfortunately, I think anytime we talk about numbers, people interpret them their own way.
Oh, definitely.
And they really do, and, and that's unfortunate, but it's just life. And I, I do appreciate this meeting, I think that we have had a good conversation, that's what it was about, is a conversation of what else can we do to work together to resolve some of the problems that, I don't like to call them problems because it's good, it's a good challenge to have growth, it's a good challenge for you and for the economy, but at the same time, it comes down to that money, you know, how do you, how do you address it on both sides? I know that Mr. Stout would love to, yes, sir?
I just wanted to say, it, it is not about you as the Board of Commissioners and us as the Board of Education, we're together for the people of Inslough County and the students of Inslough County, and that, we want to work together.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, absolutely. It's like, like I said earlier, when two operating bodies working together, find a common solution.
What's, what's the takeaway here? We, we've agreed that we're going to do a resolution.
Right.
I think we're all over that. What else are we, are we going to, I mean, I think we certainly need to update the, the capital plan, you always need to continuously update a capital plan, so that, definitely something we need to look at.
Right.
Is that, is that what we've accomplished today?
I think those are the next, the next steps, is that to be cognizant, that we want to continue the funding formula and the, you know, our capital plan, which is our tenure plan, and whatever the county can do to look for opportunities and funding for those additional projects as we move, they're not additional, but the projects on there as we move forward, you know, that's, that's in your, your court, and we want to do whatever we can to make that as painless as possible. And I think working on this K three issue is going to give us not only some breathing room, but it's also going to give us some opportunities to make better educational decisions for our kids and our teachers.
Pam, and I think a, a major thing that this meeting today will do is help educate the public on what the situation is. We need to work as two boards together to do this, but it's the public that we're asking to shoulder the costs for all of this. So I think it's important that whatever we do, we make sure that the public is informed and the public has input into whatever process we decide on.
I, I totally agree. I think if we let our citizens, citizens and our taxpayers know what we're faced with upfront, and sell, sell the plan and let people have knowledge about it, educate them about it, do whatever media resources we need to do about it, it'd be a whole lot easier when it comes time for funding for us, because we're the ones that has to make the adjustments on tax rate in order to get the funding. So if you can sell that plan to your people or to your citizens upfront, don't surprise them. If you, if you try to pull a surprise on them, they don't really, they, they don't come after us and you.
That's a big, that's a big takeaway, you know, we, Commissioner Bennett talked about takeaway, and I agree with everything here, but the big takeaway for me in reference to this is that the fact that we're working together. Okay, number one, that's a big step, okay? Because there has to be an overflow of communication, and as Chairman Bright just mentioned about not surprising the public, and it goes all to transparency, we need to be upfront with the public, let them know what we're facing, what, what obstacle is in our road because of the growth that we have here, and the more they understand, the better they're receptive to, to our concept, and then they'll understand the need if we have to do certain things. Now, we all talk about what we need to do, you know, in our meetings and how to best approach this, but to me, that's the biggest takeaway. I mean, I appreciate your invite here, I think it's great that we're sitting down at the same table, talking and discussing about a joint issue, and it is, it's a good issue because we're growing. And now we have to find a way to, to fund that growth and to keep it moving.
To be proactive instead of reactive.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just, I, I want to say another thing here because you talked about contacting our legislators, and we all need to, need to contact our legislators. I talked to somebody actually this week, and I said, how, how are we going to, you know, how you expect us to get enough money to build three new schools to, for HB thirteen? He said, yeah, you got a tough job. You know, that's what we're getting from our legislators. We, we, we need the public, I mean, you're going to have to have the public to, to be involved in this to get any attention. So it's, it's got to be, the people need to know how much this is going to cost them.
Royce, that's something that we can do at open houses and anytime we have, you know, we have the parents come in, unfortunately, all the parents that you need to talk to aren't there, so we'll try to do as good a job as we can with media through, not only social media, but through our partnership with G ten and, and do that as well, and personal contacts. You know, faith-based communities are always interested in what's going on in your, in your government, that's a, that's a base that we can tap into because they do have those discussions. So I think anytime we have a captive audience in a civic club or in, just going out for dinner with some people, just to mention those things would certainly go along the way.
I think the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is all on board with trying to get something done for either funding or either, to be more palatable with the platform. I think they, that's one of their legislative goals that they've been into the legislature is to.
That's good, that's good, that's.
And that thing you're talking about, maybe changing their lottery money too, you know, with bigger allocations with bigger populations. So we have a pretty good rapport with, with the North Carolina Association, we're members of that, so I think that'd be another way to approach our legislature too, along with resolution. Maybe we can get some other counties to do a resolution that's in our same.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think the public's interest will be piqued whenever they understand the tangible impact on their kids in these enhancement programs, you, like you talked about, and the music and the orchestra and the band, and all of those, when it, and the art, and whenever it hits home there, that's whenever they're going to become interested, and then contact their state legislators.
Madam Chair, we talked about a resolution, which I think we definitely need, I think we're all on board with that, but what about a meeting with our delegation, our four meeting people, so they can see this presentation in person, maybe that has more of an impact than reading it on a piece of paper when they might get their home now, they don't go back for the end of January?
If the boards feel that that is the proper way to go, that's what we can do.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Exactly a good idea.
It wouldn't hurt.
I, I know seeing it on paper and here is a bigger impact on me than, you know, just reading it at home or. I agree with you, I think it's a good idea.
Rick just made a recommendation that we consider January because that would be, we would know kind of what is happening up to then, and we'll orchestrate doing that if that's okay. And then get with y'all. I think Rick has a few closing remarks. We want him to feel important, he is our senior chairman.
I'm sorry, what you mean again?
Did he raise his hand?
You know, most of you know me, I, I really do appreciate the partnerships and relationships that we build between the two boards and working for the Board of Education, but I also work for everybody in Inslough County, you know, and also being a taxpayer. It's important that communication is a key, and you all know you can pick, pick the phone up and call if there's an issue in the community and our board as well. Having these conversations today, we want the funding formula to be something that we can highlight to other boards that are struggling, I can tell you from superintendents across the state that struggle with your boards, and I can always tell them, you know, on our side, we have tough conversations, but we have conversations, and that's, that's the most important thing. When you, when you're talking about catching the attention of the public, I have done that when we started redistricting twice now in our, in our, in our county. So I think the attitude has changed since the last time when you start talking to them, and some of you were in those meetings, and you can experience the temperament of those when you start moving kids around, when they're moving in one district to another, and, and when you're growing as fast as we are, we've done as much as we can to try to fill those voids in this other school, so the temperament is there for them to understand, they think we can build our schools as quick as they build a Walmart, and that's not the case, as we talked today, it's two or three years. So I appreciate the conversations. I commit our staff as myself to make sure that we can bring suggestions and ideas to our board to share with your board as well in terms of what we can do to maybe accelerate. We definitely have some areas like Dixon that has really blown its expectations in terms of growth, and you can look down there and see all the businesses going up. But we, we are in a, in a better situation than closing schools where I've seen in the past devastate communities in another sense. So thank you for, for everything, for being here today, Madam Chair, this is very helpful, and hopefully we can have more conversations like this because it really helps my staff understand the groundwork in terms of how we can communicate better with your staff on the county side, so there isn't any hidden surprises that we can be more transparent. And I'm very proud that we, we have the relationship that we have.
Thank you, Rick. Would you like to, would you like to adjourn your board? Or y'all want to sit here?
I move. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a thinking all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
Would my board like to do it?
Make the motion to adjourn.
If they're going to leave, we just adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Good evening, have a good evening.